Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, October 7th. It is a little bit after 6:30. We have four members of council present. Councilman Chenk, I am sure, is on his way. He's probably delayed with all this rain that we just went through. At this time, if everybody can stand, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilwoman Drago, why don't you lead us into the seat, please?
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the right, United States of America, and to the bottom of this stands, the nation under God, the citizens, the liberty, and justice for all. (Pledge of Allegiance)
Chief White? Good evening, Chief.
Thank you. If you wish, please bow your head in prayer. Father God, we thank you for the rain that you have bestowed upon our community. And Lord, we ask for your comfort and healing for the firefighters and their families who have lost their lives this past year. As we recognize this past weekend, National Fallen Firefighter Memorial Day, please comfort those fellow employees, coworkers, and cities and counties that have endured these hardships. Father God, we also recognize this is a very special month with cancer awareness, and we ask for great comfort and healing for so many folks who are enduring very difficult times, and ask that you guide them and direct them and heal them, Lord. Let me pray this in your name. Amen.
The rain. It will wet out there.
Yeah, that's what we figured.
Linda, just mark Councilman Chenk as your attorney. Mark him with a tarty.
We figured you were called Marine.
Yeah.
All righty, our first order of business is the Fire Prevention Proclamation. Mr. Cobb, I'd like to turn it over to you for a brief introduction, and then Chief White, if you have anything you'd like to say before I read the proclamation, I think that would be appropriate as well. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, you're asked to read a proclamation declaring National Fire Prevention Week, which is going from October 6th through October 12th, 2013. And actually, I'd probably best to turn it over to Chief White, let him give you the details.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Just should've had you stay up there, Chief.
I should've given it away, correct? We are also honored tonight, and I just want to give a word of thanks and appreciation to two of our Oviedo citizens, Valerie and Joe Acosta, who had donated this beautiful picture to the fire station recently. They had hoped to do it by September 11th, but just couldn't quite get it together. So it'll adorn the walls at Station 48, and then, as we construct the new station, it'll be relocated to that station. It's very much appreciated. It was in honor of our service to them and the community. Mayor, thank you so much. We look forward to October and fire prevention. We call it month. It's actually a week, according to the national standards, but we spend a great deal of time at all the schools and educating our community, the daycares, in so many ways, and it's so important. This year, the national focus is on kitchen fire safety, and that is a predominant cause in our state, of course, as well. So the most important things, which we'll cover in just a moment, is fire escape plans, working and testing smoke detectors on each floor of the home. We recommend fire extinguishers in the kitchen and garage, of course, and we offer free home fire safety inspections to our community, and some folks take advantage of that, and we feel we've had some success with that. So Mayor, we'll turn it over to you, and we thank you.
Thank you, Chief White. I will now read the proclamation from the city of Oviedo, and it reads as follows: Whereas National Fire Prevention Week was established in 1920 in recognition of the need for fire safety awareness as a result of the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, resulting in the destruction of 17,000 structures, 250 fatalities, and leaving 100,000 people homeless. And whereas, in the state of Florida, a kitchen fire is the second-leading cause of residential fires, contributing to over $231 million in property loss and prompting a structured fire response every 31 minutes from fire departments throughout the state. And whereas, the city of Oviedo Fire Rescue Department aggressively strives to provide community, fire, and life safety education, and stands in support of the annual National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week, promoting this year's theme, "Prevent Kitchen Fires, Get Cooking With Safety." And whereas, lives and property may be saved by creating and practicing a home fire escape plan, maintaining smoke detectors on each floor of the home, maintaining fire extinguishers in the kitchen and garage, inspecting the home once a year for fire hazards, and practicing kitchen fire safety techniques. Now therefore, I, Dominic Prisantier, Mayor of the city of Oviedo, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 6th through October 12th, 2013, as National Fire Prevention Week in the city of Oviedo, Florida. And in witness whereof, I hereby to have set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Oviedo to be affixed the seventh day of October, 2013. Chief, I'll have your proclamation. I'll leave it with the clerk. And again, great job by everybody in fire safety, not only here in Oviedo, but throughout Seminole County. Anybody like to add anything before we move on? No? Good. All right, next item, Item 2, Recreation in Parks T-shirt Contest. This is always a fun time of the year. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the city council is asked to recognize the winners of the 7th Annual Recreation in Parks T-shirt Design Contest. The youth who participate in our summer programs compete in and enter designs of different t-shirts in. Tonight, Mr. Bowler is here. We have three contest winners, and he would like to present them to you.
Drew, the show is yours.
Do you need Mayor? Counsel? Yeah, this is always a fun type time period for us. Tonight, we only have actually one person, one of the kids here with us, but actually, that's the overall winner, which is the person who designed the shirt. So to give you a little information, this is part of, of course, July, which is Recreation Park Month, as designated by our governor, and we do it during our summer recreation programs. It's open to kids 5 through 14. We had 178 kids participate this summer. We have three categories, as we have in the past: overall winner, under-10 winner, and then our, as usual, most Oviedo-riffic, so to speak. I'm going to go ahead and announce the two that are not here with us tonight. Olivia Wingard, she's under 10. She was out of town. She was unfortunately not able to be with us tonight. And then Sarah Simmons is our most Oviedo-riffic, and she's moved, so they're no longer living here, so. But we do have Sarah Kinberra, age 10, with us tonight. We'd like to bring Sarah up, and if counsel would come down and join me?
The first thing that I decided to draw was, of course, a softball field, because I play softball, and I really love playing softball. And then, I know a lot of parks have playgrounds for kids to enjoy, to play on, and then I drew a little pond, and a tree, and people sitting on benches.
Great job. (Applause) Did you enjoy your time in summer camp?
I love summer camp.
Oh, there we go. That's a ringing endorsement. Don't say that too loud. It'll go to his head over there. Shh. Staff deserves it. But, well, we thank you. That is an awesome t-shirt. Want to get a couple of pictures with all of us together? Yes, all right. And I am finally taller than somebody. Cindy and I.
Stention Elementary.
Stention Elementary. Nice. So that means you're going to go to Jackson Heights or what?
Jackson Heights.
Jackson Heights, and then, Oviedo or Hagerty?
Oviedo.
There you go. Excellent. Excellent. So you're in 5th grade. So I'm going to, we're all going to see you in a few weeks at a DARE graduation. You have Officer Duffy right now?
Yeah.
Pretty cool, isn't it? Do you know what DARE stands for? Did she get that for you?
Drug Abuse Resistance Education.
There you go. (Laughter)
And Sarah, we also have a couple passes for you for our Halloween carnival screens coming up, so we want you to visit that.
There you go.
25th, 26th.
Have you ever been to that?
No.
Oh, Mom and Dad, you got to take her. It's a haunted house. It's awesome. You like haunted houses, or are they a little too scary?
I don't need that.
Oh, okay. Well, they do it lit up, too, so you can do it either scary or lit up. You can do it either way. Dark, right? Scary. Go for it.
I don't like scary movies.
There you go. Well, you're terrific. Congratulations. We really do appreciate it. Your t-shirt is excellent. Thank you, Cindy.
As usual, I have t-shirts for all council. I'll probably just lay all your laws.
That's right. Add another one to the collection. We're up to the approval of the minutes for September 16th, 2013. What is the pleasure of council?
Mayor?
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public comment. Doesn't look like we have any public tonight, but we'll open it up anyhow. Anybody from staff have anything to share? Anything we should know about? We won't tell the city manager. Just us.
They just wanted to know what the plan is if you're on vacation.
All righty, we're going to close public comment, move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Motion approved as presented.
Second. No motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Mayor? Councilman?
I just have, I don't really want to pull it, because I found the answer to my question, but I just wanted to report on item number 70. Neptune meter purchase.
Certainly. Councilman Flores, yours.
I was a little concerned that we were going out on a sole-source contract with this. I know we were piggybacking it, and the contract we were piggybacking is running out, so I've encouraged staff to look for a way to make this more competitive in the future, but in the meantime, I've been in contact with the company Neptune that makes the meters, and they have confirmed that they've given us a price point on those meters that is the same as it was five years ago when the original contract was done. So I'm happy with that. I'm okay with it. I would just like to be able to compete this stuff in the future and make, you know, if the software is compatible and open software, it makes for better pricing for all of us, so.
All right, Councilman. Anything else from anybody? All righty, seeing none, the motion is to approve the consent agenda then, as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, item number 13. It is our public hearing on ordinance number 1572. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to adopt amendments to the Land Development Code, Article 6, Downtown Mixed Use Regulations, specifically Section 6.4, Subsection 0, and Table 6.16 relating to signs in the new downtown development and redevelopment districts. The state statutes require the city council to conduct two public hearings regarding these amendments. This is the first of the two public hearings. The Development Review Committee has reviewed these recommended changes and made a few changes, recommended a few changes of their own. Those changes are provided in your agenda memorandum. They have been incorporated into the recommended ordinance. The Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board also conducted a public hearing on this ordinance and recommended approval. I'd like to have our Development Services Director, Teresa Correa, come up and give a presentation on the recommended amendments. Tonight, we're asking that you read the ordinance by title only, conduct the public hearing, and then schedule a public hearing for October 21st, 2013. I'll turn it over to Ms. Correa.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Good evening. I don't know. I think that might be awesome.
Yeah, okay. This amendment was initiated by staff. When we were reviewing the project, the Hamptons in downtown, New Downtown, we realized that we could not approve one of the signs they were requesting. There was a freestanding sign for their development. It is residential development, 168 townhomes. The use is permitted by our Land Development Code, and we allow, in other parts of the city, to have sign, entrance signs for their developments. We discovered that Article 6 that governs the new downtown did not provide the standards for our, to allow us to approve the signs. So we found out that we have a flaw, a gap, in our Land Development Code that we needed to correct. So we proposed the Land Development Code amendment. While reviewing our Land Development Code, we also identified that there were other signs missing in Chapter 6, especially for temporary signs, for construction signs, and since the new downtown is coming now to life, we have the opportunity to see what other signs that were not addressed. So we also incorporated that in this revision. So initially, it was to provide standards for a freestanding sign for residential development in the same way that Park Place apartment was allowed, but Park Place apartment was in another sub-district of the new downtown, so there were guidelines for that there. And then, we expanded the revision to provide standards for temporary signs, for construction signs, for real estate signs, and we considered that this revision is a temporary measure, because we will have the opportunity to review the Article 6 in its, in a whole, as a whole, and in a more comprehensive way while we will be doing the Land Development Code review. And we wanted to be careful also with whatever we were proposing to new downtown, because it has different, it has a different vision than the other parts of the city. So you have here the ordinance with the changes, and they are mainly related to incorporation of standards for, to allow primary entrance residential signs in the new downtown, revision of temporary signs. We also removed some requirements as to sign illumination and neon lighting that we didn't have in our, in the other parts of our code, and we removed prohibited sign elements to maintain also consistency with our Land Development Code, Article 14, that is specifically to signs. And we incorporated all DRC's recommendations as to the language.
Three second one. When you say you're making the downtown code, and I realize this is very high level right now, more similar to the regular code, we're not looking at LED signs or anything in the downtown?
No.
Because those were prohibited?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
No, we are just allowing for temporary signs, for construction signs, that things that were not, yes.
Anything else, Mayor?
Well, they will be permanent now, but when we have the opportunity to do the review, the review for the whole code, we'll unify them in one chapter. That's the idea.
Yeah, because there is a sign code, so to speak, for the downtown that was written way back when. It's just not, it's not as defined as some of the others.
Yes.
Well, it basically just says, you know, downtown walkable, scalable signs, type of thing.
Yeah, but they were using different terms, so now we're trying to unify the same terms, you know, across the board in our code.
Great. Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
All righty, Mr. Groot, can you read ordinance number 1572 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to the regulation of signs, limiting subsection 6.40, including table 6.16, Article 6, Downtown Mixed Use Districts, Land Development Code of the city of Oviedo, relating to new downtown development and redevelopment districts, sign standards, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for penalties and remedies, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. This is a first reading. It is a public hearing. I don't know if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to address us on this. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule the second public hearing for ordinance number 1572 for October 21st, 2013, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. Motion?
Second.
No motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to first readings. We have none. Resolutions, item number 15, resolution number 2733-13. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to approve the use of social media to promote the city and city events. At your September 16th, 2013, meeting, the city council adopted resolution number 2725-13, approving revisions to the communications guidelines, policy to establish a policy in which the social media sites will be administered. Resolution 2733-13 addresses the parameters for establishing and maintaining such technologies, and the use of the city's seal on the homepages of each site developed. Utilizing social media technologies such as Facebook and Twitter will allow the city to communicate with its citizens in a timely manner and at no expense. It is recommended that the city council adopt resolution 2733-13. Ms. Hayes has been the lead staff on this project, and she is available to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I have no request to speak for him, so what is the pleasure of council? Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to adopt 2733-13.
Second.
No motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
That's a project, isn't it? If you can't beat him, join him, you know? No, seriously.
Go get a Facebook page.
As long as it's done correctly, I think it'll be fine. I just get a little worried about when we're, you know, someone says some, you know, sends something in and how we address it if it's not appropriate. I mean, if things are not appropriate, they shouldn't go up there. That's my only concern, but other than reaching out to the city, everybody's on Facebook. I mean, and you do Twitter or whatever you're doing, so I'm okay.
Four fifths of us.
Yeah, I'll get there. I might surprise you one day, you know? But I'm only, I would only let in certain people, you know, because there's just so much information you don't need, you know? It's just, but I think it'll be done, done good. Mr. Groot, you're on top of the content and the speech and all that. That was really my main concern, I guess we have to keep an eye on.
You're looking at the father of seven daughters. I've never been on the top of content or speech.
Thank you.
Nope, I'm good.
Great. Who is the second? The second, Councilman? Councilwoman, yours.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good way nowadays to get information out there to the community, especially with everything that we have going on. It's a good idea. I have my concerns about protection, as Deputy Mayor has, but I'm sure it'll all be, it'll work out good, and it'll be good to have our own city brand and set up every little bits here and there. So good job, Robin.
When are we going to have it ready to go?
Mayor, council? It's at your discretion. It is ready to go at this point in time, but until tonight, we did not want to obviously activate it. We didn't want to presume anything, but whenever you tell me that you wish for it to be active, is the date. We'll put it out there and make it active. The communication policy is in place.
See how the vote goes.
Thank you.
Councilman Britton?
I'm okay with it. I tend to think that the more transparent we can be, the better, so I would be more concerned with not getting information out to the citizens than giving them too much information. Again, appropriately, we've got to watch that, but everyone else does, too, so it's the world we're in. That's it.
Great. Councilman Chenk?
I'm not far from it yet. As I said before, hey, I really want to see website brought up to speed first. I think that's the main, we know we really need to be working on as our main point of informational source is the website. We don't have a plan for that yet. I also think that, as we talk to the guys from Orlando, the real thing about this is the interactive nature of it, which brings two things in, you know? We always, and I always see this, and it always jumps out at me, and we say there's no cost to this, but there is a cost. We're making a choice to do something, put somebody's time towards this versus something else, and the policy and the way that we're going to have to do this is we're going to prove everything that goes up, so there is a person's time that when posts go up, there has to be approvals, looking at the approvals, to make sure that the posts are, meet the criteria that we set forward. So we're putting a person's time towards this versus other things that we could be utilizing people's time for, or utilizing that cost to get our website up to speed and get it into the best shape that we can to provide the information. Besides, there are lawsuits, and again, that Orlando guys have brought forth, and said there's a lot of lawsuits, and there are some first amendment lawsuits that are in the courts, going through the actions, that still need to be settled down, and I think it's another venue for those unscrupulous attorneys and others who utilize the sunshine records in the search. That's going to be a new arena for them to start hitting at, is making sure that everything is done correctly, and every, every search and everything does produce the right information. So I think there are those pitfalls that I look at, again, namely the website, and if there is a person's time that's going to be putting forth, reviewing all these posts that are going to be made, not only on our behalf, but when somebody else makes a post to approve those posts, et cetera. As for the Twitter account, I'm all for it, have been for ages, a year ago, at least a year ago. We should have two of them set up, one for general use information, send information out on a Twitter account that says, here's all our stuff, here's, it's Fire Prevention Week, we've got the haunted house coming up, et cetera, and then having another alert system that alerts people that there's an accident on Oviedo Boulevard, corner of Oviedo Boulevard, Mitchell Hammock, avoid that if you can. That, I think, should be a great effect, and again, if there's any of those two, those two, but I just don't see that the interactive nature that a social media needs to really make it worthwhile as a social media, it becomes a, de facto, it's an informational source, but we really could use that same informational source the better on a website, make the website more change very, as often, et cetera. So I'd rather sort of resources heading towards our website than making that the best website. Same as all the other places, just like Orlando, their main source of information still knows will be your website. That one, another calendar, I suppose. The website is their main information source, provides the basis of all information for the public to go find out and go find any information. all information for the public to go find out and go find any information for. I think that's where we need to focus.
Thank you. Well, you know, I, I certainly understand that we need to update the website. I know it's been in the budget in the last couple of years. Each, each year, we start to move forward on it, and for some reason, we hit a roadblock of some sort. So, you know, it's been no secret that that's been something the council has wanted to get upgraded for a couple of three years. So, it really needs to come to the forefront this year and actually get it out there, get it bid out, get however we're going to do it, let's, let's just do it. And then get the person who is going to keep the information relevant. As far as Facebook, Twitter, you know, I'm all for it. It's, you know, we have folks out there right now creating Oviedo websites and creating Winter Springs websites and controlling what should be our message. And, you know, I, I don't have an issue with it. I think social media, as Councilman Britton said, it's here to stay. It's what, it's what is today. We just have to manage it as best we can and use it to get all that information out. Twitter is just another component of, you know, I, I just don't, I don't see as many adults using Twitter as I do the kids, but I'm not a social media expert. We have our e-news as well. So, you know, if something's going up on Facebook, Twitter, it should be going out e-news all at the same time. You have at least, what is it, about a thousand email addresses, I think? You know, and then we should be advertising e-news on Facebook and Twitter, so we can get more people to sign up for the e-news. So, that way they'll get their city newsletters electronically rather than us printing them and mailing them and going through all of that cost in motions. You know, now, that's another thing. I mean, even the newsletter can be posted up on Facebook, you know?
On the website, too.
It is on the website. So, you know, I'm, I'm all for it. I think that, I think we're a little bit behind. I think we should have been a little bit ahead of this, but, you know, in my opinion, I do agree with Councilman Schenck. I mean, that website's got to get fixed. It's, it's not that the information isn't there, because it is. It's just if you don't know where to look, it's very difficult. It, it does become. So, great job on putting all of this together. Go up and down the dais one more time. Anything else? No? Call the question. The motion on the floor is to, sorry, let me just get the resolution under. To adopt resolution 2733-13. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Moving on.
Mayor, is it okay, activation date tomorrow, or?
Nope. We approved it. Off you go. I'm assuming, right, guys? All righty, discussion items. We have none. Mr. Cobb, you're up. And I see you left a whole bunch of stuff on the dais for us.
Yes, sir, I did. Actually, Mayor, I have one item under my report. If you remember back during our work session on the 30th, we had a discussion about approval authorities. And one of the things that is unique to the new downtown development districts is that the land use administrator or the city, or the city manager has approval authority over all development within those two zoning districts. But one of the things that I'm very cognizant of is never, ever to abuse that authority. We are currently, our Development Services Department is processing applications for the Panera Bread Restaurant, which is located in the new downtown Village Core District. And that, that development has requested certain deviations to the architectural standards and also the buffering standards, as well as the sign standards within the new downtown Village Core District. They are of such magnitude that if it were located in, say, a C2 zoning district, these deviations would require the execution of a development agreement between the council and the developer. So, what I wanted to do, and also to stay consistent with what we did with Park Place Apartments, I wanted to review with you tonight the requested deviations and then let you know of the ones that I feel we should go ahead and take action on and approve. But then there's a couple of the deviations that I feel that we shouldn't take action on at this time, possibly wait for more information, but also be guarded in our review of those deviations. If you would, please, in your packets, there is a sheet, it's of the Panera Bread building. I believe it's A-5 dot 1. You'll notice there are two facades on it. One is for the elevation that faces Mitchell Hammock Road, and the other one is for the elevation that faces City Plaza Way. The first deviation that I want to describe to you involves the elevation that is for South Mitchell Hammock Road. And it is a 200, the, the land development code requires that 60% of the facade facing Mitchell Hammock Road must be in windows. The Panera Bread Restaurant, this facade, 38% or 241 square feet, is in windows. And so, they need a deviation, I'm sorry, 397 square feet is in windows. The requirement is 638 square feet. So, it requires a 241 square foot deviation. This is a 38% deviation. Also, on, if you look at the facade that's below that, you'll see the facade that faces City Plaza Way. And this facade is required to have a, it's required to have 487 square feet under windows. It's got approximately 168 square feet covered in windows, so it needs a 319 square foot deviation, which is a 65% deviation. As I mentioned before, this is, these, both of these deviations, any other place in the city would require the execution of a development agreement. But what you have here is that the architectural standards within the new downtown Village Core District anticipate one type of development. It is a mixed-use building where you have retail on the first floor and then possibly office or residential above it. And so, it's set up more for retail stores than it is for a single-use restaurant. And so, that's one of the reasons why I would, I'm inclined to allow these, because the design is the best that they can do to meet the intent of our code, but it's not, they cannot meet the intent because the code was designed for a different type of development. So, with those two, on those two facades, I would recommend that we do approve those deviations as part of the site development order. The next deviation that I would like to...
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you move on?
Sure.
And I, I'm asking because I made this mistake before with the building, the windows, or maybe I'll ask Councilman Schenck. These are the windows down here. What is this up here? Okay, all right. Thank you. He answered my question.
Okay. If you, if you were talking about in the rendering, the white, what looks as sort of a grayish?
Yes.
Those are the windows. These are actual canopies that cover the windows. They project out from the building?
So, they'll be sticking?
Yeah, they, they project out from the building by about, I think it's, I believe it's around 18 inches that they will project out from the building.
Okay.
Okay. The, the next deviation that I would like to review with you also involves the stay-on sheet A-5 dot 1. It also involves the facade that faces City Plaza Way. And that is a, it is, the land development code requires that any building fronting on City Plaza Way, and in the land development code, it's called a veto way. But any building is supposed to have a four-foot arcade, or a canopy, or a, some type of cover over the pedestrian area of the street. This, once again, you're talking about a type of development that really is not, it's consistent with a mixed-use building, but not consistent with a, with a Panera Bread Restaurant, a single-use restaurant. The Panera Bread Restaurant is set back approximately 71 feet from the sidewalk of City Plaza Way. Now, these canopies were to be designed to project over the sidewalk. Well, you'd have a standalone canopy, then you'd have the building itself, if you really followed the code exactly as it was. So, it's really not something that would be, it would, it would detract from the site to require compliance with code. And so, what we're recommending is that we approve a 100% deviation. In other words, not require them to construct the arcade along the City Plaza Way facade. And that was, that's something that we've also, we would recommend that we go ahead and approve that and make that part of their site development order. If you could, in your packets, if you would find the sheet that is marked C1, that's what it's called. I believe it's attachment number three. And in this, and it's a picture of their site plan, the northern buffer yard within the site development plan is eight feet wide. Now, the land development code requires that that northern buffer yard be 10 feet wide. However, this is, this one has some special circumstances in that we have, this one borders Lemon Bluff Way. If this were a, if Lemon Bluff Way were a public right-of-way, it would be a very simple case. We would be able to show where the Lemon Bluff Way right-of-way line is, and then we would go 10 feet off of it. However, Lemon Bluff Way is a cross-access easement. And it, the property, the property line is in the middle of the, of the access easement. So, we had to begin the buffer 15 feet into the property. By shrinking the, by shrinking the buffer down to eight feet, we're able to make better use of the property. We're also able to keep a buffer that is compliant on the south side along Mitchell Hammock, Mitchell Hammock Road. So, we put the focus of the buffering system along Mitchell Hammock Road and along City Plaza Way. With Lemon Bluff Lane being a cross-access easement and basically being the rear of the property, we were able to shrink the buffer down to eight feet. It's only a two-foot deviation. We were able to shrink it down to eight feet, but we're also able to maintain the landscape plan. That's one of the things that we're not asking for, as far as the deviation is to the, to the landscaping plan. But we, it is, it is a two-foot deviation to the, to that buffer yard width. And that is another deviation that we would definitely recommend that we allow to be approved as part of the site development order. There are two other deviations that the applicant has requested. They both involve signage. We currently do not have a plan to show you as far as signage is concerned. They are requesting two, two, two deviations. One is to increase the pre-standing signage from, from 24 square feet to 40 square feet. And the second one is to increase the height of the signage from five feet to eight feet. Basically, what they're asking for is to have the same type of signage that would be allowed anywhere else in the city. As I said before, we do not have any graphics to go by to see how this sign fits within the development. And so, what I would recommend to you is that we not take action on these two deviations at this time, that we give the applicant an opportunity to give us a signed plan to review before we take any consideration of such deviations. One of the things I would also want to do is to make sure that approval of these deviations would not set, would not set a precedent for the other parts of Oviedo on the Park that front on Mitchell Hammock Road. That's one of the things about Oviedo on the Park, its uniqueness and the fact that it's, it's, it's being developed on a pedestrian scale. It's on a human scale. Our regular sign codes, where we allow the 40 square feet and we allow the eight-feet height, that's more on an automobile scale. And so, that's one of the things that we want to make sure is that whatever we do regarding signage, that we don't set a precedent. It's going to maybe come back and haunt us later in, when we start developing the commercial parts of Oviedo on the Park. We want to make sure that we're consistent. And so, since we don't have the plan, and we really haven't been able to sit down and discuss with Mr. Groot, is, you know, what is our risk of setting the precedent here? I would recommend that we don't take action at this time regarding the two sign deviations. But the deviations that involve the building and the, the rear buffer yard, I would recommend that we move forward, make them part of the site development order, and issue the site development order with them included.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. It is the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Deputy Mayor, excuse me. You know, not to, not to rehash everything Brian said, but I, I, I would just motion to accept the city manager's recommendation so we can get this going, because, I mean, it's a project that we're being asked about almost daily. It's way behind. And to me, honestly, the building looks fine. I, I really have no issues. So, my motion would be to take the Mr. Cobb's recommendations on all fronts and proceed.
All righty. Do you want a motion, Mr. Cobb, or would you?
Actually, I just need consensus.
All right. Well, we got one consensus. Two consensus.
I'm good, and I'm more concerned with the timeline here. Brian, I know we got something from Teresa on a number of iterations that went through this, but this is pretty simple stuff. And I know you explained it very well on what the deviations were, but it looks good to me. I don't know why these drawings have a July date on it. We're here in October discussing it. I'm just going to challenge you to try to streamline the processes. I know this is complicated stuff, but we've got to be a little bit more proactive with these, with these folks that, that come in. I think what we agreed on at the beginning was this was going to be pretty much the same as the Winter Park store. That looks nice.
Apoca.
Apoca? Oh, there's one on, on Aloma too, in Winter Park.
Yeah, this is the Apoca store.
But let's, let's get this thing entered. I agree with Deputy Mayor. We're getting calls on this almost every day.
Is it, Councilman? And I am good too, Mr. Cobb.
Thanks.
You know, I do, I do agree a little bit with Councilman Britton, but I did get a call from the architect of Panera. This did not slow them down or hinder them, fortunately, in any way. It was discovered when they actually came in to pick up permit last week on Monday, was it? Maybe Tuesday, something like that, they were coming in, that this had fallen through the cracks on the deviation approval. So, they are out to bid. They are done. They are ready to break ground. They just needed us to, to bless this. But as the councilman did say, I think in the, the future, because there'll be more of them that, that come through, I mean, as we get them, just bring them to us, and that way we can give you a direction on them. And when folks are ready to go, they can just come in and get their permit, you know? Thank goodness, this one didn't really, didn't affect anything. They were, it was explained to me that they were delayed waiting for infrastructure improvements in Oviedo on the Park that they share. I mean, we've known that all along. So, go forth, issue, and give the architect a call tomorrow, give him something. I think I shared his phone number with you, if I wasn't mistaken.
We have.
If not, I haven't. And let's get them going. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
No, Mayor, that is it.
Great.
That's all I have from my report.
Mr. Groot, you had something for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. And I think Mr. Cobb wanted to excuse himself as the courtesy to the council, but it considered this matter.
I'd appreciate it if all staff would please clear the room.
Could Miss Collins stay, or is that okay?
Yes, HR can stay. And if we could just close the door. Thank you, Chief. Oh, that's fine. It just makes it easier when, makes it for a more comfortable conversation.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you had tasked me with negotiating a contract to bring back to you for consideration with Mr. Cobb to memorialize his status as, as permanent city manager. On September 28th, I emailed you all with, with the draft contract and told you that I'd bring it forward at the next regularly scheduled meeting. This is that meeting. I am bringing back a contract to you. I can tell you that, and Miss Collins can feel free to chime in, it's essentially the same contract that has been used in the past. And it's essentially the same contract that was used for your predecessor, Mr. Cobb. past. And it's essentially the same contract that was used for your predecessor, Mr. Cobb. The salary that's being brought before you today is the amount of $147,500 per annum. The leave, excuse me, the health insurance is basically, is the same as any other city employee. I would say that the, the biggest differences between this and any other contract would be the matter of leave. There had been some expression in the past as to how did, you know, when, when employees had left, how did their leave balances get so high? Well, that just happens with a long-time employee. It particularly will happen with Mr. Cobb because he has been a long-term employee. What this contract does, however, is try to be sensitive to that and encourage the use of the leave, almost mandate the use of the leave, and provide for buyback provisions at the end of, at the end of calendar years that should press down that growth in leave. I think Ms. Collins, is that a good term from HR perspective? To press it down so it doesn't, you know, increase to extraordinarily, extraordinary amounts over, because of non-use over periods of years, which I know you all are hoping the next city manager will be here for a lengthy period of years. So...
Hopefully, 10 years from now, we won't be worrying about it.
Well, that's, that's true. But there is an attempt in this contract to address that sensitivity, which has been expressed in the past, and it's a legitimate one, to press down those, those leave balances. The, there is a provision in, in the contract for a car allowance where the city manager elects either a $400 per month stipend for, for car, as a car allowance, or the use of a city car. And I think Mr. Cobb, assuming that you approve this contract, would, is looking towards the use of a city car. At least, that's my understanding. Everything else is basically plain vanilla and the same, although it has the essential provisions that you need in the event a termination is needed. I don't say that expecting anything. And it provides the essential provisions to adequately compensate Mr. Cobb in the general employment environment of central Florida city managers, I would say. Ms. Collins, did you agree? She does. So, with that being said, I stand ready to answer any questions with Ms. Collins' assistance and to accept any action that you desire to, to make, take.
Thank you, Mr. Grueg. Why, I start on my left. Councilman Britton, just a few questions. Connie, is there a cap on the amount of annual carryover, carryover hours that the city has for, for employees? Connie, what you coming up with tonight?
Yes, the annual cap for vacation time is 288 hours.
Okay. And that, but that doesn't apply in this, this contract?
This allows for it to exceed that amount, but with a buyback, so that it pushes it back down again.
So, each year, if he's, if he's got a use or lose that he won't be able to use, we can buy it back and get him back down to the...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It provides that the city manager may sell back the leave in excess of 288 hours.
Okay.
And we all already have that ability with the sick leave. So, that's not unusual when you look at the general employees as a whole.
What's that, buyback?
Buyback. Mm-hmm.
Okay. How does that work?
The sick leave incentive pay is the ability to buy back at 50% for the general employees. Yes.
And I, I guess my question for you is, you've been involved in this process? This is a pretty standard contract for a city manager, and it's competitive for the area?
Yes, I would say this is very competitive.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Deputy Mayor?
I really have no issues. I think we've, I think we've hit some things in the past with some salaries and certain compensations that, you know, managers, not just here, but in other cities, were looking for. And certainly, we're hoping, I, I have no doubt that we have, you know, a person who's been here, I believe, 17 years, you know, with the city, has shown his loyalty to the city, has shown his loyalty to the community. You know, it's, it's a salary that's a little bit higher, would not be given to somebody who we didn't know who just came in. But, you know, Brian has been here a very long time. It's well-deserved. I think it's a, it's a great contract. You know, and it's kind of a, for me, it's, it's kind of a reward for, the old saying is, when you work hard, you're gonna get somewhere. And Brian certainly has filled so many roles here for all of us, you know, from the time he got here and the projects he's taken on. And, you know, it's, it's comforting to me to have him sit there. And frankly, since he took over, I, I, the city has never been run better. So, for me, I'm, I'm all in favor of it. I wish him a long, long-term employment with us and just to do great things. And it's, you know, it looks to me as that if he gets along with everybody, I mean, nobody ever says anything bad about Brian. He's just a good, good man all around, and I'm happy to have him. So, I'm in favor.
Counselor?
I, I just have one question. Under the, under section 12, it's severance and other pay upon separation.
Yes, ma'am.
In paragraph A, it says that the city shall provide severance pay equal to 20 weeks of salary at a current rate of pay. Should there be a timeframe in there? You know, like, if we hire him right now, today, does he still get the 20 weeks of salary?
Yes, ma'am.
If he leaves tomorrow?
If you terminate him tomorrow, for that cost, not if he leaves.
I, I think as a department director, isn't he under the old contract system of 10 weeks?
Yes, he is.
10 or 15?
How many weeks does he have already?
What, what does he get right now?
Well, we, 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 yes, uh...
Our, our department directors, councilwoman, have a severance contract that was implemented under Mr. Miller I, I think.
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. That was my other question.
Anything else, Counselor?
No.
Counselor Schenck?
I appreciate the work.
Connie, I just, one quick question. 401, 457, that's all compensated at the same rate as all other employees?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'm good. What is general consensus? You want a motion, Lonny? What do you want?
Well, it, it depends upon how you would like to do it. If you'd like to do it with Mr. Cobb, out of the room or in the room at this point?
Bring him back. We've talked about it. We can just bless it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we're gonna ask the public to leave?
Just kidding.
That's the advantage of being the public. You guys just get to stay.
They know. Mr. Cobb locked himself out of the chambers, Mr. Cobb.
Actually, Connie, everyone else, everyone come back in.
Let's see this portion.
But, but we're just getting ready to go home.
All right, Mr. Mayor. A motion would be appropriate at this time, however you want to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Grueg. I'd like to obtain a motion if we can. Councilman Britton?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve and accept the city manager's contract as presented.
Second?
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Britton?
Welcome aboard, Brian, to a new job. You've been here long enough, but we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Yes, welcome, Brian. I'm happy to see you take the job.
Thank you. Counselor Schenck? You're the one who brought it up. Deputy Mayor?
Brian, I was saying when you were out of the room, you're a good man. You're, you're a, you're a perfect example of work hard, come in, do everything that's asked, and, you know, bring people together, and couldn't happen to a better person. And you're not allowed to quit or anything for at least 20 years. Thank you for stabilizing it. And Linda, get that interim thing off there as soon as possible. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, Brian, interim, no more. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Grueg, we'll have to schedule a swearing-in ceremony as well?
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Cobb, maybe next meeting, meeting after, whatever's convenient for him and his family. And we do have a motion on the table to adopt. Is there anything else from the council? All those in favor of the motion to accept the contract as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity. I really do. And I'm looking forward to moving us in, moving us forward. We've got a lot going on right now, and we've got a great staff. And they make my job easy. So, thank you very much.
Now, those Nissan race cars that you were looking at?
Yes, sir.
Two, right?
Yes, sir. I was, actually, I was out there showing them around.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think I perked the cheese ears when I said it'll go zero to 60 in two and a half seconds.
I think we're up to seven now, Jerry. You can work him in the budget?
Eight.
Eight.
New pursuit vehicle.
Oh, my goodness. Mr. Grueg, do you have anything else for us, sir?
I have to further this, ma'am.
All righty. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
Go report, ma'am.
Thanks. Counselor?
Oh.
Sorry, I'm number two.
Yes, I didn't expect that so quickly. Well, I want to bring up again the 2013 Tri-Knee League of Cities Nomin, um, distinguished service awards. It's going to be held on Friday, November 8th, at Lou Gardens in Orlando. It is the first annual distinguished service awards program. And they will be honoring elected and appointed officials from Orange, Osceola, and Seminole Counties at a gala dinner. You should have received invitations. You did. Okay, good. I have forwarded the nomination process to Brian, and he is going to look at, we have three categories. We have municipal elected official of the year, executive official of the year, and employee of the year. So, I'm hoping that we have some nominations from the great city of Oviedo. And I hope that you all consider attending. It's gonna be the first time. And actually, tomorrow, I'm going to a tasting for the lunch, I mean, for the dinner. And I'll try to pick out some good Italian food for everyone. And I just wanted to say, I went to the farmer's market on Saturday, and it's great as usual. And great day, November 9th. It's a fun time. Take your family and friends and enjoy all the festivities. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Britton?
I've got a couple things. I'm gonna try to go through them real quick. First one up is a letter I got from MC Horton. And I understand, Jerry, you're, you're speaking to the gentleman regarding his water service?
That was the one I sent you, Jerry, on the, the issue of the credit being applied to the account, but the water's still being turned off. I sent it to you about a week and a half. You, you have it.
Here's a copy right here. I can give you that. I don't want to dwell on that one. I did have a Calno meeting last week. It was a very, very good meeting. It was at the school board. And Dr. Griffin gave a state of the schools in Seminole County. It was very impressive. We are one of only five school districts in the state that were given an A rating. We had a 58% pass rate in the AP exams, which he calculated was a cash value of about $2 to $3 million in savings from having to pay tuition to go to those classes. Those are just a few things he mentioned. Some of the proactive things they're doing from the pre, preschool arena to make sure that kids come in on an even playing field. And if they're not, some of the things they're doing to get them on an even playing field is really impressive. I will get the charts from the meeting and pass them on to you, but we may want to have a, I think it only took about a half hour for me to do it. But if we can have him in on a work session or something, it's a pretty good presentation on what makes this area so attractive to people moving in. One of the comments was that the Verizon headquarters that's coming to Lake Mary, they are almost to a, a person saying they want to come here because of the schools in the area. And that's, that's worked well for all of us. One of the other items at the meeting was a presentation from Phoebe Powell from the Department of Children and Families. And she was describing, she's actually being transferred over to Bovard County, but they do have a children's alliance meeting monthly at the sheriff's office. And they have been requesting that a city representative attend those meetings. We asked for the information so we can pass it on. And I'd just like to open up if someone on the, on the council wants to be our representative. I know there's some, a good information that she passed along and, and very valuable. I put some of it in the email to you guys that, that Robyn sent out as far as the number of what they call maltreatment reports that, that they get under each zip code. So, I'll bring that up as just, just a comment. If you're interested in it, maybe we can just let me know. Or, or when I get the information, I'll pass it on. Just raise your hand. Question?
No, I've said that usually that, that information, when I was on the community alliance, I was asking, that information gets passed along to the community owners, usually, and then can also be thrown up in that pass.
And I sit on, I go to those meetings, but they haven't had any meetings for at least six months.
Okay. They were saying, this is just being passed along, that they, they don't get very many city representatives. That's what we, we should be...
It's like a Wednesday at 9 o'clock, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Wednesday at 9 o'clock or 9:30 at the sheriff's.
At the sheriff's office, yeah.
Okay. Are you, you go to those meetings?
I did, but they haven't, since Captain Barnett retired, they haven't had any.
Okay.
So, I don't know what's happened to it.
Community Alliance is the chartered one for the state, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good information, too. We need to maybe pick it up from that end.
Yeah.
The last thing I had was a email I got as part of the community service block grant advisory board that I'm on. And it was a program that provides up to $6 million for training, skills training to individuals. And I thought it was a perfect match for the Paul Mitchell Schools. I sent it on to them, and they are in the process now of becoming a qualified training provider to tap into that, that program. So, that was just something that fell on my desk for that advisory committee, and may help out some Oviedo people that are looking for financial aid that need some help. And with that, that is all I had.
Great, thank you. Looks like I'm up. The farmer's market again. Chief, I'll piggyback on the councilwoman. You had a great turnout this weekend, great weather. And both chiefs, I mean, you do a great job out there with it, and the community just loves it. Keep it up. Hobby Lobby had their grand opening this morning. Realize that's over in unincorporated Winter Springs, but it was quite the crowded event. It seems like that, that's a place that everybody just loves. I don't get it. I'm not that crafty, but it is, it is a big place. Yeah, the old Albertson's.
I spent many hours there this weekend.
Chamber luncheon this week is Friday. If, for those of you who may or may not have it in your calendar, and it is the state of education, Dr. Hitzke will be there. I am not able to attend this Friday, so there is an extra luncheon ticket. I mean, they, they give us as many tickets as we want. So, you're planning on attending, I would just coordinate it amongst everybody so that way Terry or somebody can call the chamber up and just let them know how many of us are going. So, that way, they've, they've got enough. Hagerty Talent Show was this past Friday night, and Deputy Mayor and I got to judge it. And I gotta tell you, the Hagerty High School's got some talent amongst those kids. It was, it was a lot of fun to watch. And his son actually was the emcee, one of the emcees this year. So, the kids had a great time. We spent a couple hours with them. And the gentleman who actually won the, won the show could probably be on Broadway right now. What was his name?
Jonathan Rose.
Yeah, Jonathan Rose. Exceptional. Councilman Schenck and I, a couple of weeks ago, got a tour of Oviedo ER. And I must say, that's coming right along. Mid-November ribbon-cutting is what they're, they're still shooting for. So, we'll look for invites to that. I'm sure it will be coming shortly. I know they have a couple issues going on now with the bridge, I hear. Yeah, Chief White's over there smirking and smiling. The left-hand turn bridge off of Redbug seems to be giving them challenges. They, well, now those big curved things they had that they were setting, they set one in it. One of them cracked. So, you know, these aren't, these aren't parts that are on a shelf. They've gotta be, it's gotta be recast. So, they're, they're working around that engineering challenge right now. So, but, well, they'll keep us posted. It's not gonna delay their opening whatsoever. So, they're not worried about that. Brian, the branding initiative and, and the logo, I know... Brian, the branding initiative and, and the logo, I know we've had that chart hanging up in the back there for a while, and I realize we got sidetracked with, with $100 million and other things, but, you know, maybe withdrawing out of Facebook with hopefully updating the website, maybe we can get council consensus that whenever we're having a work session, don't schedule one, just roll it out, let us bless one, and that way we can start, you know, moving forward with it. I, I think there was consensus, didn't you ask us for consensus on a few of them? Maybe? Okay. All right, maybe council, if you can give them our top three off that board in the back, just send them a quick email, and then I guess there's boards that go along with it that we'll get, and like I said, whenever the next work session is, we don't want to schedule one.
Yeah, Mayor, all we really need is an email saying, "I like," and whatever letter underneath the...
Whatever letter.
Whatever letter it is, yes.
Uh, Metro Plan was this Thursday, and I just, for information for council, I'll leave the agenda package in the back. I think it's in my truck. Uh, but, you know, there, there's extra dollars floating around all over the place right now for road projects that people are, you know, grabbing at, and we don't have any representation right now for our 419, 426 project. So, you know, that, that is something that we're gonna have to put, put a plan together and decide what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, uh, because this is, this is the year where there could be some discretionary funding, and we're about, Bobby, what are we, about 30 million short for Phase 2? All right, 'cause we got the 20 from the county and give or take 20 to 30? Is what we're still short. So, you know, Phase 1 is fully funded. I checked with Gene at Metro Plan. The, the money that our representatives moved up last year is there, so Phase 1 is funded. Construction right away, the whole, nine yards is what I was told. Was that what you're being told, Bobby?
The only thing I don't have confirmation on is the final of partial takes. I know all of the, the partial takings on the right-of-way. The whole takes, I've been told, are completed. It's still, I haven't had a confirmation on the partial takes.
Okay.
That's still outstanding.
You can, I know you put together a memo. I thought I saw something.
It's coming out tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, maybe just double-check on the FDOT side?
Yes, sir.
On the, on the funding. According to Gene Ferguson from DOT, the, his best recollection to me the other day was the money was moved, everything is funded, Phase 1 is, you know, as soon as they get everything done, it's ready to go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. But, you know, getting back to the, the point of the story is, you know, they're in committees right now, that we've got session coming up, and if we're gonna move this, this money, you know, we have to make a decision. Are we gonna do it, or are we just gonna let it naturally happen? If we let it naturally happen, you know, we're number six on the list, and there's, there's projects that just keep jumping ahead of us, is what's starting to happen now, because we don't have anybody representing our interests, but, uh, we'll have to bring that up at another council meeting for a discussion. Mr. Cobb, are you in any position to put something together for us all as a discussion item perhaps at the next meeting?
It'll be close. It may, the first meeting in November may be more appropriate. We'll give it our best shot. Today was the due date for the next meeting, so that's fine.
Could be a short memory. Just a plan of action, a cost of action, a deliverable, everything that we've all asked for. I mean, we've had enough meetings where I, I think everybody has asked for something that we might be able to put it, put it together and see where we're at and see what we can do. You know, that, finishing that roadway is the key to the east-west traffic movement in the city of Oviedo. And, you know, everybody's, you know, we get asked a lot, "Oviedo on the park, Mitchell Hammock Road." Well, you know, Oviedo on the park right now and Mitchell Hammock Road, it's not that much additional traffic. Later on, it's going to be. And if we don't equalize that east-west movement quickly, which was the whole point years and years and years ago, when we put our $8 million towards that road, you know, we are gonna have some trouble. Brian, did you ever get the east-west traffic study? Were you ever able to find it?
They, I know that when, on Thursday, when I checked, they were still looking for it, and I was, I gave them some ideas.
It might be in that pot, you know, it might be in the back room.
Might be in that back room. I gave some ideas about, I, 'cause I had a box in my old office?
Okay.
That had all the, all of the traffic study reports in it, and I said, if you can find that box...
I, I'll look at home. I've got a filing cabinet full of them.
But I gave them the name of it, and I, I believe that Patty had found it.
Is that the one Whitland did?
Yes.
Right. Great. End of my report. Uh, Councilman Schenk, you're up.
We, yeah, just, we did get a, an invite, actually, I piggyback, Brian couldn't go to the Oviedo ER. That was a thank-you luncheon from the GC, I believe, wasn't it? It was a gen contractor that, the ER, Oviedo ER. That was the GC who gave that thank you.
Yeah, he gave the barbecue.
He had a thank-you barbecue to all his guys that were there, and Brian couldn't attend, and I subbed in for him that day. And we did get a look at the place, and go through it. It was, you know, very nice to see, very nice to see all the officials there from the hospital. Uh, they're very happy. They're actually having one of their, we crashed in on one of their monthly meetings, or I think it was a monthly meeting that they had with fire inspectors and everybody else there, so we kind of sat in on that for a little while. This is quite interesting, but, uh, good to see them. Saying thank you to the guys who are doing the work. They're very appreciative of it and getting close to the end, and see where we're putting these up. Um, I also attended the Jill Easton Smith Run Sunday and read the proclamation that we had given. Everybody was very appreciative of that also, the council.
What was your time?
Uh, my time was, I ran a mile and a half for my son. I want to see my son.
What was Ethan's time?
That's a non-natural answer.
His time was, uh, went 24, 54.
That is pretty good.
That was his first run ever. That's why I wanted to see the finish. It circled around, and I saw him coming back, so I just kept coming around so I could see him finish. Yeah, he had, very nicely, there was another young, little seventh grader who I, I'd asked a couple of people, who wears about a 26? Who's gonna run about a 26? And this mother and her son were talking. She goes, "Well, I'm gonna probably run about a 28." So if you hang with him, he'll run a little bit faster. He'll probably go about a 24 something, so find out where you're at. So he ran, and so he did a really good job. He was very excited.
How does he feel today?
He's feeling good. He's played, went to lacrosse practice tonight, so he's, he's been running cross country. Yeah, whipper snap.
I haven't, I haven't walked in two days. I've been there once Saturday.
That's mine, that's mine. Thank you.
You're it? That's it? All righty, future meeting dates. We have, well, wait, before I call future meeting dates, anything else from anybody else? Future meeting dates. Monday, October 21st, 2013, 6:30 PM. Then we have Monday, November 4th, 6:30 PM, regular session. Monday, November 18th, 6:30 PM, regular session, and I do believe there is an October 28th work session at 5:30 PM relative to the community center. Correct? Anything else on that agenda?
Uh, not currently.
Maybe branding?
Yes, there is. Right.
Nice. And how about maybe the branding stuff, too, if we all get it in, we get the boards? Great, 'cause that'll be quick.